Alrighty. Yeah, that'll be good. We do have new slides for topic number three. Are they on iPortal or? Yes, they are. So folks, you might want to download a new packet.
Alrighty. Good morning, Commissioners and Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Welcome in. Good morning, everyone, to Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, the Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined by Commissioner Roy Rogers, Vice Chair Nafisa Fai, and Commissioner Willie. Later today in our business meeting, I do anticipate that Commissioner Thrice will be zooming in from a different time zone. So we'll see how that goes for her. So we have two topics on our agenda before we go into our business meetings that are absolutely jam-packed with the Housing Authority Board of Directors Meeting and then the Board of Commissioners Meeting. Between the two meetings, we will be approving, if I have my numbers right, seven different budgets today. So it is a big budget day. Does anyone have any questions on either of the formal agendas before we move into work session? Just wanted to double check. So, okay. Well, without further ado, can't remember. I can't believe I actually remembered to check in on the formal agenda. Skip that step so many times. Amanda Garcia Snell, could you come up and join us and discuss the Advisory Council on Racial Equity Appointments? Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So Amanda Garcia Snell, Community Engagement Manager. As you may recall, when your board created the Advisory Council on Racial Equity as part of the equity resolution and community input, that because it was a new advisory council, we staggered terms. We had one set of terms that were folks serving two-year term and then the rest of folks serving a three-year term. And from now on, folks will serve a three-year term. That two-year term has ended. And so bringing forward to you all a recommendation from the Advisory Council on Racial Equity to reappoint three existing members and then appoint two new members to fill some of the existing vacancies and then we'll work to fill the rest of them. So the two, I'll focus on the two new members, Anna Deanna Johnson and May Mohammed. So Anna Deanna Johnson brings experience as a disability advocate. And then May Mohammed is a Muslim woman and a physician in the community. And the process for ACRE is to, there's a membership committee out of the ACRE members that look at the applications and then also do just a brief 15-minute conversation with folks to better understand their interests and what they might bring to the council. And so they have recommended those two for new members and then existing members, Don Kuma and Suzy Saffina Atholoy, who is the, those are two of the founding members of ACRE or the original members of ACRE, and then Peter Hanley, who stepped in a midterm vacancy. So Willie would be reappointed to serve his first term.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Kind of been good. I spoke by everybody, right?
Yeah.
These are great applicants and I'm really pleased for the folks who are seeking reappointment as well. They've been great contributors. So yeah, it's really wonderful. I think we're ready to do the appointments. Thank you. Terrific. Thank you. Well, that brings us a little early. I hope we're not catching our Public Safety and Library Local Option Levy Team off-guard. And if we have, darn, come on up anyway. Come on up. Plenty of chairs and plenty of mics. Welcome, welcome this bright Tuesday morning. I am just grateful that we are on the West Coast and not having to deal with a heat dome. Though I have lots of relatives out there. They're going, oh my gosh, like, don't worry, it's survivable. It's just brutal.
It's brutal while we're doing it, isn't it? Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board. Thank you for having us today. My name is Erin Calvert. I'm one of the Assistant County Administrators. I'm joining Dani LaDesma, another Assistant County Administrator, and Philip Brandes for the Communications Officer. And today we're going to talk with your board about the timeline and milestones for both the Public Safety and the Library Local Option Levis.
And I would also like to add, we have Sheriff Caprice Massey here with us as well.
Thank you. Next.
Is the clicker even on yet? There you go.
There you go. Okay, so the purpose of today's presentation, of course, is to establish board representation on steering committees for both levis. And I'm going to talk a little bit about this a little bit more. This actually will be adding a little bit of project structure to the levy work that we'll all be doing together. We're going to describe the progress so far for both the library and the public safety levies development and what that means, what that looks like. We'll walk through a reminder on the general approach for preparing measures for the ballot. And then we'll, of course, walk through the revised timeline, which takes us from our starting point of November 2025 and walks us backwards. The questions for your board today, sorry, is what two members of your board should be appointed to our Public Safety Levy Steering Committee? And then what two members of your board should be appointed to the Library Levy Steering Committee? And of course, does your board have any additional questions or direction for staff? And over to Danny. Let me get this. Is it being sluggish? It is a little slow.
You need some new batteries.
Might be me in fidelity right now. So good morning. My name's Dani LaDesma, one of the ACAs as well. And so as we kick off this update about our plan for the, for both the Public Safety and the Library Levy process, I did want to take this opportunity to kind of bring you back to a slide that you've seen before. This is familiar and to remind you about the outcomes that will come out of our comprehensive governance funding process through the WCCLS. So our fabulous leader, Lisa Tattersall, is working with our fellow cities as well as our nonprofit libraries to basically go through an in-depth process that are going to hopefully get us to these very specific milestones and outcomes. So if you'll recall, the purpose of this review is to be able to understand and to establish a common understanding of what is currently being done. So we're establishing understanding of the current set of service levels and costs. We hope to have this work completed by September 2024. And we'll be back with you in our, in a work session. Additionally, by January of 2025, we use this initial current state of service levels to be able to establish what are the base library service levels that should be available for all community residents. So we want to make sure that we're providing best possible information and recommendations for baseline service levels and a cost. And that'll be, that'll happen in January of 2025. We'll come back to more detailed information about how this dovetails into the library timeline process. But the hope is, is that by establishing these milestones and timelines, that there's plenty of time to be able to dovetail into the library levy process. Later in 2025, in the fall of 2025, we'll continue to refine and evaluate partner roles and providing those base service levels to the community and basically having a, have a report that recommends governance improvements to be integrated into our IGAs with our counties and with our fellow cities and nonprofit organizations. In January 2025, in addition to understanding what those future state baseline service levels, we'll also be able to deliver a cost assessment and three to five funding alternatives. And you'll see later in an upcoming slide about how that dovetails into the levy planning process. Ideally by June of 2025, we're also aligning with a county to establish, make sure that there's clear metrics and an understanding of what those partnership agreements, you know, sort of what, what the return on services were to those IGAs. So we think that this set of milestones is a nice way to make sure that we're completely engaging and working well with all of our partners in the library system, while at the same time developing a comprehensive set of recommendations for both for you as a deciding body, but also we'll be able to create a lot of good information for voters in support of the recommendations for the voting.
Can I double check? That on the third bullet, establish and refine partner roles and provide base level service to the community, that's really September of 2025 versus?
That is correct.
Okay. In some ways, when I read this, I thought, well, is this telling me that if our partners are ready, could we possibly go to the ballot in May versus November? But I don't know if I'm being too hopeful and I should just wait till later slides.
I think, I think the, this was all sort of predicated on a levy referral in November because we know that, as you'll see in other timelines with Public Safety and also with how we've conceived of this, that really the, you know, November is recommended.
Yeah.
From you about the time that would be needed to prepare for voting.
Well, and that third bullet being out in September tells me, oh, we have a little more work to do. So, okay. Alrighty. Thank you.
Okay. And as an update for the Public Safety and Justice Local Option Levy, staff have convened a kickoff meeting, or we did convene a kickoff meeting in May. And again, just to insert, when I say staff, so we, I think for project structure, just to be really clear, we're talking about a staff levy team that includes all four of the current recipients of the local option levy, the departments, the directors, associated staff, financial analysts, management analysts, comms team members. And so that's a pretty big group to be looking through current service level. Just a reminder for all of us, what we're currently using the levy funds for, what the service level looks like, and really getting grounded in the cost model right now. What is that service? That will be our levy staff team. Today, we're asking your board to form or designate a steering committee, which will be kind of that middle layer between that levy staff team and your full board. And that will be a smaller group, I think, that will consist of our elected officials, the district attorney and the sheriff, as well as two members of your board that you'll determine, and then the other department directors from Juvenile and from Community Corrections, and then Philip and myself and others as needed. But it'll be a smaller group to really kind of work through that financial and program analysis to begin to build scenarios, which I know Philip will talk to us in a little bit about, and how that rolls into polling and surveys and coming back to your board. And so for right now, we're taking the month of July to really dig into the financials. I think it's not a secret that we had a long-time staff a few years ago who really shepherded a spreadsheet and all of the financial details. And we've had a lot of turnover. And so we are going to work with our finance team and a consultant to really build a model that can be sustainable and that other folks can learn and, and help build. And with the feedback of the staff and your board, we can make that something into the future that everyone can use. It's a little bit more manageable, I think, is what I'm trying to say. So that is the current work that we're doing in July. And then our hope will be to convene that steering committee in August.
I wasn't aware of that. We didn't really have much transparency with regard to putting together the May 2020 referrals. So it's good to hear how you're building on, yeah, building on things and taking all of our learning since then, including from that awesome Public Safety and Justice paper.
All right. Well, thank you. And your board has seen this graphic before. It's meant to be a very high-altitude look. So don't get caught up on the, well, descriptors here, all this text that we've plotted here. It's really about those two triangles and how they kind of overlap with one another. Just as a reminder, a level set. So the idea is that the, all the work that Danny and Erin just mentioned is happening in that, that bluish triangle of proposal development. It's a lot of detail, financial, programmatic, kind of ground truthing to make sure that we're giving your board the best possible information for decision-making as to what ultimately you want to put before the voters. And then it, as, as time moves forward, there's this overlapping process. And that's that greenish triangle where we're actually doing what a predecessor of Erin Calvert's once called market research. That's the part where I'm helping out. And I have lots of, I have a team as well that's helping across the organization to get some voter surveys going. And we're anticipating, as you'll see in a second, not just one round, but probably we'll need two rounds. So at least planning for that level of, of testing with our, with our audience whom we're ultimately putting this decision before in November of 2025. As Danny mentioned, that's our, that's our target. So you'll see here that, I mean, if you're, if anyone remembers the last time we saw the slide, which was months ago, we didn't have the notion of a, of a steering committee. So we've used that in. And that's part of what we're here to talk to you about in terms of how, how some of these decisions are made. But the, the rest of it is basically the same as, as before. Any, should I just check in and see if there's any questions about the general high-altitude view here on any of that? Does that make sense? Okay, great. So then we have a little bit more detail here. And I'll start it off with how this, how this marches forward with respect to the Public Safety Levy. As Erin mentioned, the idea would be to establish these steering committees with representatives of your board to, to help us with the decision-making on that proposal development side of the House. And we would love to have that first meeting in August and then help with reacting to scenario development that ultimately would come to your full board. I will start to help with bringing in our, our public opinion research firm to help kind of tease out, okay, well, based on some of these big picture scenario ideas, what kind of broad themes? Because I don't anticipate we'll have any granular decisions done by then. But what kind of broad themes could we test with our voting population? Start working on round one of a survey and bring that, bring all of that conversation back to your board in September in work session. And the, the target for that round one of survey work would, would be that sweet spot after Thanksgiving, but before you get too deep into December. We've done that, that spot before on the calendar with our voting population. It's been very helpful and, and we had some good correlation between actual, you know, the survey data and what actually ended up happening in, in, on Election Day. Now, mind you, we're talking about a November election. So this is, this is, that's a, that's a, that's a big stretch. So I got to put a little asterisk around what I just said. A lot can happen between November of 2024 and the actual Election Day in 2025. But that would be, that would be our idea of getting that first round of survey work, you know, in our pockets so that we can actually look at the data and see together what makes the most sense, what's resonating. All right. No, I think.
We haven't a consultant put together that to serve.
Yeah, we'll have a, yes, we'll have a professional consulting firm that does that random sample scientific survey with. But we're gonna, they're gonna be on the ride with us. We're all gonna work on it together.
All right. So here's where you can keep me accountable about that smooth dovetailing. So your, your board heard in late May and again last week about our sort of governance and evaluation process for both funding and governance for WCCLS. So you heard that it's, it's a very structured, while also participatory process that does have specific outcomes and milestones which are supported by, by you. And so the Library Levy Steering Committee schedule in 2022, sorry, 2024 will be just slightly different from that of the Public Safety Steering Committee as the library's process is already underway with firm, firm timeline and deliverables that you've reviewed. So at the first meeting in August, the Library Levy Steering Committee would get an overview of the history of the library levy rates, voter supports, messaging, and previous polling that's done. The second meeting would include an overview of the results of a broad community survey that the libraries are conducting as part of their funding and governance evaluation process in July and August. The results which could help inform and support the questionnaire drafting conversation. So on the funding and governance evaluation and process timeline, draft levy rate options for your board to consider based on future base service levels will be available in January 2025. Staff recommend that the steering committee would have an emphasis on community perceptions of service offerings and meaningful messaging for the first round of voter surveys in the fall. Libraries, like many services in our communities, have really been impacted by the pandemic. And we're seeing different usage patterns. So staff recommend that the first survey focuses on community perceptions, services, and messagings. And then the results would then inform the development on the second survey.
Oops. All right, so.
I test.
Yeah. This is a rather crowded slide. And the big picture takeaway is we'll be in the survey business big time right around those winter holidays and into January, February. We'll basically be working that part of the project non-stop.
You're all ready.
Yes.
Philip, I'm not ready.
You'll get there.
Twenty twenty-five.
I've seen you do it.
Century into holy jamali.
So, so we anticipate to have those first round survey findings, the round one in early January. And right on top of that, we'll be working with the two different steering committees to develop the survey questionnaire round two. And you'll see there's, so there's some nuanced terminology here as we, as we talk about where, where public safety will be relative to where libraries will be. But we're both anticipating that, needing that second round based on how far along the scenario slash proposal development will have come. Because in that second round, that's really intent there is to really get to the precise wording as best as we can that would be appearing on the ballot. So you're actually testing the real deal with your voters. And that target would be right around March. Catching up with myself here, yeah. Late, late February, we'd, we'd be in the field for that with, with, with some early findings there by mid-March. And we would come back to your board. Now, both, both of these levis are back on the same exact timing here by mid-March. This is an aggressive approach. This is going to consume a lot of our time to get this all done by that point in time. But we are, and we are looking at a filing date of March 21st. We checked with, with our elections office, and that is the earliest date that we could, under Oregon statute, do this filing in order to keep the number sequence going. You know, every measure on the ballot has its own unique number. So that's the, that's the earliest we can go. I've also located a couple rows down there. The latest we could go would be September. But as you might recall from the last time we spoke, part of the advantage of going into November cycle is that if you can get settled on what it is you're asking the voters early, you know, in spring, and then work with our Secretary of State's office on what a government entity can say to the voters when some filing has made, been made in order to comply with the restrictions on public employees with respect to elections, then that gives you the summer to do a lot of outreach. And we're anticipating we'll need to do that in order to explain what, what, you know, these, these two levis might be asking of the taxpayers, might be asking of the voters. So that's an advantage. You get many, many weeks of outreach to, to conduct. And it takes a lot to, as you might understand yourselves, just as consumers of information, there's a lot of clutter. And so part of what we're doing is we're trying to get through the clutter and a lot, and leveraging off all the events that happen over the summer and all the work that we can do to reach our audience well before Election Day, which would be on November 4th of 2025. So you can see here that we would want to file the measures well before then and, you know, continue that outreach well, well, right up to that Election Day. That's basically the, the scenario here that, or the timeline that we're trying to describe.
Let me ask a, a detailed question because it seems to often take us by surprise. Part of it, I think, is our own controlled process. In order for us to do a referral, I think we have a process where we have to have a public hearing daytime and evening.
I'm, I think that's right. I know there's a public here. Do you happen to know?
I don't know, but I will look into it. Thank you. I would like to know, related to that, if we wanted, could we have two nighttime meetings? I know we can have an additional business meeting. So I think we'll want to do some careful planning in there so that we achieve our goal of providing as much flexibility for success for the November ballot. Oh dear, I did just think ahead to details in 2025. I did get there. Thank you, Philip.
You, Chair.
The caffeine's picking up.
So we're hoping just some key takeaways from today would be that your board is going to form the steering committees for both levis. It would help guide the scenario development and the voter survey drafting, as Philip talked about, that we've reviewed some options for the Public Safety Levy being, the proposals being developed early this fall and for the Library Levy this winter. But the draft proposals and survey questionnaires are coming and we'll all be working on that together. And that, as Philip just mentioned, final board decisions in March of 2025. And I hear you, Chair Harrington, we'll look into some meeting times to ensure that we have the best amount of outreach possible. And then, of course, the outreach to voters from the summer until Election Day in November. So the questions again, just for your board, is what two members of your board should be appointed to the Public Safety Levy Steering Committee? Which two members of your board would you like appointed to the Library Levy Steering Committee? And can we answer any questions for you today?
Well, I'll let you know that I spoke with Commissioner Thrice about this. She's all in on both of these levis, but she has a particular soft spot for the libraries and would appreciate being part of the Library Steering Committee. Commissioner Rogers, I know your tenure with us will be closing out the end of the year. Are there any thoughts you would like to contribute at this point? I'm assuming you look forward to not being on the hook for a steering committee.
Questions first, discussion. To me, the genesis of the discussion has to be the metrics that you're going to use to measure the level of service. And for a number of years, I've said, that's crux of the problem we have at the county, whether it be service level to the urban incorporated or where we go with, with our levis have to do with the measurement of services. So having said that, a little surprise that there is two siloed approaches. I understand that we're different services. I understand that the delivery is a little different. But it seems like the metrics would be very similar. And you can say, how so? Well, discussion is, is, is the same level of service provided to somebody from rural, urban, incorporated cities? That's one obvious question. Another obvious question, what would the, if that's true, the same level of service, what would that look like? Right? I mean, is there some service level that would be acceptable? If we're going to take and measure, as we did in the past, we had a theme that said, everybody gets that same level of service, what does that really mean? I mean, I, you might have one perception, I might have another perception. So I, I understand that you've got two product lines. Product lines have different discussions. It seems like the metrics are very. So to the second part of the question, I don't mind being involved. I just don't have the, I mean, I'm not going to be here to carry forth a discussion of the budgets and a discussion of how we get there. of budgets and the discussion of how we get there. I have some very definite ideas. So I happy to participate in that. But if somebody wants to let me off, that's fine, too. I don't have any problem being involved or not being involved. Wouldn't mind holding a place, though, for my predecessors, or my successor, I should say. So he has an opportunity as well.
We'll be talking about that come January.
You will, but that'll be too late for this.
So Commissioner Rogers, just on the the idea of sort of like aligned metrics. So this work is not done in silos. I think that in just one short month, because it's already June, your board will also receive more information about the county's current service level assessment, where we are reviewing the questions that you asked about sort of location, about sort of, you know, sort of who's receiving services. And so we'll have a presentation for you and your colleagues about that work, where we're looking across all of the county services, and we'll be able to provide some more information about that. I think the other place where you'll start to see metrics that are sort of beginning to come aligned is some of the preliminary work that we're doing in development of the work of the countywide work plan that is coming from your updated strategic plan, your strategic plan update, where all of the different departments are establishing a work plan for this next calendar year, this next fiscal year, excuse me, as well as key strands of work and the indicators that indicate, you know, whether or not they're successful in accomplishing that work. So while this, so I would say that this work is underway. We're doing this in collaboration across two two portfolio areas, but there's also quite a bit of work getting to that, that those answers of outcomes and metrics across the county.
I could just respond and follow up with, at least two of us, maybe more, but I know the Chair and I both have been arguing about that level of service in the urban incorporated area. Will any of this work that you're doing have some transference to that question? Because that that is a huge question that the last fifteen years would never have tackled, you need to. So you're saying yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that was my questions. If I if you need somebody, I'd be happy to participate in the public safety portion of it.
Commissioners?
I appreciate the question Commissioner Roger asked about the two processes and why we need two different segments of commissioners. And I appreciate the answer you provided. I think you've provided really good clarity for me, Danny. So thank you. I'm I, I would like to say I like to be both, but I think I find the the learning, the experience and the impact of participating in public safety a bit more aligned. So I'd be happy to participate in that.
Well, from my standpoint, I'm on the Public Safety Committee, the P S C C already. So that would be my natural tendency, but I do have a lot of libraries. So I'm going to leave that open because I've been with libraries for twenty years or more. Since the nineties, actually. So, yeah.
I'm all in on public safety. Commissioner Willie is very accommodating in my being his shadow with the P S C C. And it's a very open group. So I especially like that in those few occasions where you don't have an opportunity to be there. They're more than happy to welcome me up at the table.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that that you're an active alternate on this. So thank you for that.
Thank you. So the public safety levy work is going to be very intense. So Commissioner Phi, you're going to need to be very accommodating with your calendar if you wish to participate there. So that's something to think about as well.
Nodded to Brenda. Noted.
Pardon me?
I said noted. I was making a nod to Brenda.
Oh, okay. Alrighty. So we'll I appreciate Commissioner Willie, your accommodating being with libraries. Because I know from your mayoral experience that you also have levy experience. And I realize this is reiteratively for Commissioner Phi. So appreciate your flexibility.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I love libraries as much as I think public safety is the top priority. So I'm good with both.
That'll be.
Yeah, public safety.
So I'm all in on public safety.
You, maybe Jared.
Yep.
We'll go from there. And with regard to the broad themes for the surveys, that will be a different day. You'll be coming back to us on that. Okay, great.
Great, thank you.
Terrific. And a reminder, serving as board liaisons on these steering committees, we are reflecting contributions from the board versus individually.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to a good pause point. We've got big meetings coming up, so having a little extra time for setup is a great idea. So we will pause here and reconvene in work session at a different time than usual because we anticipate with all the different public hearings that our meetings will go late. So but we'll, we'll visit that, but we're aiming for one thirty. We'll see how that goes as our meetings continue. Thank you.